Good evening, everyone. Good evening. My name is Paul Cohen. I'm town manager here in the town of Chelmsford. Welcome to this information session this evening. We have handouts, so make sure if you come in, there's copies of the presentation materials that you'll see this evening and on Monday and beginning of town meeting. Also, there's the Finance Committee Advisory Book as well as the Budget Book, some materials. And again, if you have them, if not, you can pick them up on your way out. And if you do take them, please remember to bring them with you to town meeting on Where this meeting is, again, obviously a benefit to you as you prepare for town meeting, and because some can't make it this evening, we are televising this, recording this for Chelmsford Telemedia, and they'll play it, you know, between now and town meeting session. So with that in mind, would ask if you do have a question, again, because it's your information session, please come up and use the microphone, because otherwise, people who'd be watching the replay of the meeting won't be able to understand what's being asked, and again, it'd just be informational. So we'd ask you to do that. So without any further ado, I'm going to turn the podium over to our town moderator, John Curlin, who's got some opening remarks.
Thank you, Paul. First of all, how many of you are new town meeting reps who have never? Well, first of all, thank you for stepping up and welcome, and to the rest of you, thank you for continuing to participate in the oldest legislative process in the history of common, well, Massachusetts, but also America, town meeting. Basically, at the beginning of town meeting, I will provide the instructions on protocol and how you should address each other, and basically, the rules of the game. After that, we will swear you all in, and we will test the electronic voting equipment, and hopefully, just a few other announcements, and we'll get into the questions and the articles. One of the procedures for you new individuals is we have something called a consent agenda, where we try to bundle a bunch of relatively routine articles in one vote. Each article will be presented separately, and you will have an opportunity to ask about any of the articles in the consent agenda or to weigh in on them. But normally, it's been our experience that most of the time, they pass relatively quickly, and we can get through a number of articles relatively quickly, because we have some articles that are going to be much more deliberative than we have had. So the consent agenda was in my letter to all of you, but to reiterate, it's Articles 2, 6, 9, 12, and 14 through 25. Also, we have an unusual situation where Articles 26 and 27 are basically mirror images of each other in reverse. In other words, one is advocating a particular vote, and the other one is saying, "Don't vote for the other article." And what we're going to do is we're going to have both sides present together, and then you can ask whatever questions of either side, and we will take a vote on Article 26, because whatever we do on Article 26, basically, we don't need to vote on Article 27. So if we approve Article 26, then we don't have to vote down Article 27. If we vote down Article 26, we don't have to approve Article 27. So we're just trying to keep this as time-efficient as we can, because I know that you value your time, and I value it, value your time as much as I possibly can, understanding what's, what your time is here, and I'm taking up too much of my, of your time right now. So if you have any questions about the consent agenda or anything else, there's one other thing I want you to think about. We've been thinking about changing town meeting to run from 7:00 to 10:30. If that is problematic for you, I'd like to hear before Monday, and we think that some people are having a hard time staying as late at 11:00, and if we start at 7:00, we can retain more town meeting reps as opposed to the ones who just feel as though they have to leave early. So just give it some thought, and I'm going to do what you want me to do with respect to that. I'm not going to change anything if there's a good portion of town meeting who says, "No, leave it the way it is." But if you think that this is a better way to operate, I'm, I'll do whatever you want, because this is your town meeting, it's not mine. So thank you.
When we look at the warrant for this town meeting, there's really two articles of historic significance, meaning if you look at the major parts of the community, what would they remember when they look back at the 2024 Spring Annual Town Meeting? And the first one, and probably the paramount one, and it's really the paramount one across eastern Massachusetts right now, is the MBTA zoning. And that is at the end of the warrant. So the plan is for town meeting, as John noted, would be the second session, assuming, you know, again, with 27 articles in total, we, you know, we're likely not to complete work on the remaining articles as we start at 7:30, because we're going to have some presentations at the beginning of the meeting and so forth, and so it's just unrealistic to think. But in fairness, to have a holistic debate, and everybody refreshed and everything, the thought would be to take the MBTA zoning articles, first item of business, on the second night, on Thursday session, and then if there's anything left over, we'll just resume it afterwards, and then we would wrap up the warrant. So I think the expectation, you can tell us, this will probably be a two-session town meeting. But for your purposes tonight, we have, we have people from the Planning Board here with us on that paramount article. They basically postponed what would really have normally been their regular meeting night, and are here to present on that, along with their consultant from NIMCOG, Kelly Linema, and our Community Development Director, Evan Bolansky. So with that, I'm going to step aside the podium, turn it over to Chris LaValle, who's the presenter from the Planning Board on the MBTA zoning, and then we'll go from there. And remember, this is an information session, so this is the purpose, to provide information for you and for you to get your questions answered, but it's not a debate session tonight. We're not here to debate whether it's good or bad, yes or no. Again, it's information. So with that, John's going to advance the slides, and Chris, I'll turn the podium over to you.
Thank you. So first off, I just wanted to mention that I do have two different slide decks. One is the deck that you'll be seeing on the screen, a little less worried, so it's easier to follow along. The other deck is the one I sent out to town meeting reps earlier this week with more data, more information on it, so that you can have that as well. So I would recommend bringing that also to town meeting with you if you want. Okay, so the background. The state has designated about 177 communities in scope of this law. It is a law that was signed by Governor Baker in 2021, and it requires that municipalities pass zoning that follows certain guidelines. It's not, it's not dictating what the zoning is, but it is requiring us to follow certain guidelines. There are certain MBTA's, specific communities with MBTA stations, and then there are adjacent communities. We are categorized as an adjacent community. Lowell and Billerica, which have the stations within them, are considered the MBTA-specific communities. So why is the state doing this? They're trying to provide more housing of various sizes that'll be beneficial to senior citizens, municipal workers, young adults, folks with families. They're really trying to address the housing crisis and provide more housing in the state in what's called the missing middle, which I'll get to in a couple slides. The state has done this before with the 40B housing as a precedent, and they passed a law that pretty much provides performance standards that the towns must follow. And so we are writing and hopefully passing the zoning to follow those performance standards. So what does this new law require? An MBTA community or adjacent community has to create at least one zoning district of a specific size. The zoning itself can't have age restrictions. It has to be at least 15 units per acre, and it has to be at least 50 acres in total. For Chelmsford, it has to have 10% of our, or has to allow for 10% of our housing stock, which is about 1,477 units. Half must be contiguous, and it needs to be neighborhood scale, so we couldn't specifically pick out certain properties and include those. We had to be more of a neighborhood size for each zone. While multifamily units are permitted by right with no special permits in these zones, any projects that do come before the Planning Board do still have to follow their normal site plan permitting and things like that. So the Planning Board strategy that we followed is really to address the lower end of the missing middle, so that we didn't have huge high-rise buildings, we aren't looking for really dense housing. We're really trying to target the lowest density we could possibly fit with this housing. We wanted to minimize any negative impacts. We wanted to minimize the likelihood of short-term development, primarily because of the town's limits with sewer capacity, the school system, and we've already had a lot of increases in the housing stock as of late. We wanted to maximize any positive impacts, if there were any. We wanted to minimize potential decrease in commercial property. We wanted to base our new zoning on the current multifamily zoning, as well as the UMass West overlay district. We wanted to also select areas that are currently developed and have a very low probability of being developed, because we know that the town can't sustain immediate development. So the process that we went through started in June, where we sought the assistance of NIMCOG, the Northern Middlesex Council of Governments, to help with the process. They were helping us interpret the state guidelines and requirements. They were, are helping to provide the modeling, understanding the new law and requirements. And in July, we started to brainstorm areas about around town where we wanted to take a look at possibly putting this overlay. We discussed the initial benefits and impacts of each area in order to select the ones to model. We had NIMCOG do the modeling, and we did the analysis of the modeling to narrow down the list in early September. In September, we then had a number of input sessions with the public and also town committees and boards. We had a UMass West session. We did a session with UPS area, 110. Kelly Linema from NIMCOG was there, as well as the folks who were doing the modeling. In October, we added additional areas that were suggested by some of the members of the public. We added those to the modeling to take a look, to see if they also fit the criteria. In November 2nd, we specifically went before a number of town committees, boards, and departments to present our input, or to present the selections and gather more input. The two areas that we finally selected for the proposal were selected in November, and then we started to focus on the zoning itself, brainstorming what we wanted to include. We then made the decision in November to base the MBTA zoning on our current multifamily zoning bylaw, as well as whatever we have in place now for the UMass West overlay. In November, we then drafted and revised the new zoning for town meeting, and since then, we've been doing a number of outreach sessions, presenting to various boards and town groups. So the districts we reviewed, I have listed here. I have a little bit more detail in the handout, so I'm not going to go through every single one of them. But as you can see, we did look throughout town to select the areas that we thought might potentially benefit from, from this, as well as took a look to see what the downsides were for these areas. Ultimately, we selected UMass West area and the 110 multifamily area, because we felt that those areas were the ones that were least likely to be built. And I'll get to why in a minute. So if we take a look first at the UMass West area, we have the UMass West campus, as well as the Windermere and Meadowwood condominium association properties. And we selected this area because it did fit the size, the minimum requirements, but we also realized that this is a condominium association, so the likelihood of a developer coming in or expanding beyond that UMass West campus is pretty low. The developer would have to come in, buy every single condo unit in that, in those developments at market value, then pay to demolish, and then build up to the overlay specifications. And that's just not realistic or feasible. We also selected the UMass West campus itself as part of this, because it was part of the design of that campus to be included in that, in this overlay. When the discussions were happening, it was during the draft proposal of the MBTA zoning, and so that overlay district was modeled after that draft version. The final version was slightly different, and we'll get to some of the impacts of that in a minute. The 110 multifamily area was the other area that we selected, and if you look at these tables, I'm not going to go through them tonight, but if you look at the tables, we also wanted to show how many units are currently in these areas, as well as how many could be built out in addition to that in, under this zoning. So the actual impact to the town, if these were ever built, would not be the 1,477 units, because about roughly half of those units are already in place in the town using services. So if a development ever was to be built under this MBTA zoning overlay, the net increase to the town would be about half of that. So on the next slide, we wanted to show you a little bit as a holistic view of the table. So the guideline requirements require us to zone for 1,477 units over 50 acres. If we actually did that out in town, that would be an allowed density of almost 30 units per acre. We really did not want that ever to happen in Chelmsford, so what we did is we expanded the zone to about 100 acres. That modeled out to about 1,500 units, and that brought us down to the minimum density we could zone for at 15 units per acre. The next slide shows you some potential architecture. Buildings that are in place now at Glenbrook, Woodcrest, and Fox Hunt, and these are the types of buildings that we have modeled the zoning after, the performance standards and the architecture. So the next slide shows the highlights of the law, or the proposed zoning overlay. 15 units per acre as a maximum density. It does limit the size of the building to three stories, 24 units per building, not more than six dwelling units from a single entrance, and not more than 200 feet long. So we do limit the size of these buildings in the zone. It allows for townhouse and medium multiplex style buildings. We do require varying architecture in the buildings, so as not to have a boxy look. We do require 25% of the total area to be used for recreation and open space, and we do require bicycle storage as well, just like our current multifamily zoning. So in March 18th, we received a letter from the state to provide us with some input to our pre-submission, and most of it was minor concerns with minor language in the bylaw that we were able to fix in our March 13th meeting. Most of those were small issues and edits, wording conflicts within the bylaw, clerical error on paperwork, and those were taken care of pretty quickly. However, there were three significant concerns that were raised to us from the state, and it was really around the development agreement between the town and the developer. These three areas were in, are in conflict with the zoning overlay, so the state does have some concerns about that and wanted us to address them. The specific concerns was that the capacity in the development agreement caps it at, I believe, 12 or 13 units per acre, and that's 77 units below what the modeling asks for. Also, the affordability in the agreement is at 15% level, which is higher than what we are allowed in the zoning. And then the development agreement with the town also has the age restriction, and that is in direct conflict with the zoning. So this is an issue because it's an agreement between the town and the developer, and that's the key point. If it was between developers or owners, it wouldn't be an issue, because it wouldn't be a town sanctioned limit. So the Planning Board is recommending to the Select Board, and the Select Board did agree in the last meeting, to work with the developer to amend the development agreement and to remove these restrictions in the fall timeframe between, hopefully, when we approve the zoning articles and when we submit them to the state. And I'll get to that in a minute. So amending the development agreement, we feel, is extremely low risk, and I'll go over why. First is because the site has been built out with approved plans already, and there's no adequate space to put a building or 77 additional units and the associated required parking. They would have to completely redesign that property, and that's not feasible, given the fact that they've already started building. In addition, the project is fully financed, it's fully permitted, and as I mentioned, actively under construction. So the developers are not likely to change course at this time. In addition, any significant modifications would require the following hurdles to be overcome, and this is one of the reasons why we're recommending the development agreement be amended after town meeting and after the July 1st date, because currently, all the permits have been pulled for that property. If the developer wanted to redesign everything, they would have to repull the permits. And if we did this development agreement after July 1st, they would pull the permits after July 1st, and they would have to abide by our new energy stretch code, which goes into effect July 1st. Currently, they, the plans in the buildings do not comply with that new stretch code, so they would have to redesign the buildings in order to meet those codes. They would also have to refile and go through the process again with the Mass Environmental Policy Act. The Conservation Commission and the Planning Board would have to re-review and reapprove the plans. The water, the North Chelmsford Water District would have to add capacity to their site, which would include fee payments and potential off-site capacity mitigation. And the potential changes would need, would require additional capacity to be added to their wastewater treatment plant that they have on site. They have not designed that wastewater treatment plant for any additional capacity beyond the units they currently have. They did allow for some peak, temporary peaks, but not a sustained increase in volume. So that would have to be redesigned, and a redesign of that would mean filing again with the DEP and getting approvals for that. So with all of those hurdles that they would have to go through for the developer to redo that entire site, we don't think it's financially feasible for the developer to even attempt to do that. So the proposed timeline of next steps that we are proposing is the, in late March, the regulatory agreement for the age restriction in the choice units and these six affordable units were submitted by the developer. Once those regulatory agreements are approved, those are locked in, and we expect those to happen probably around early June. June 2nd is the 30-day period after we submit the town meeting vote for the attorney, the state attorney general to review our bylaws that we've passed. So in September of 2024, we expect, if the zoning is passed at town meeting, we expect that the attorney general will approve that. We also expect by then that the regulatory agreements will be in place. The July 1st energy code deadline has come, and so in September, November is when we would recommend the town enter in the discussions with the developer to amend the development agreement. We have, Evan and our town council has already been in discussions with the developers for both Choice and Tremel Crow, and they have agreed in principle to amend that development agreement, or the development agreement in the fall as needed to satisfy the state requirements. And they have also said that as long as it is revenue neutral, that they will not make any changes on their side. So the key takeaways, we really do have to comply with the state law. It is a law. If we don't comply with it, we will immediately lose some state grant funding. We also will likely be sued by the state for non-compliance. We also might put other state programs in jeopardy. I know that we're in the process of looking at a new school building, and I would hate to have the state look unfavorably on us for that as well. Also, two areas that we selected for compliance with the state law while minimizing impact to Chelmsford. We really wanted to focus on that, that concept. We wanted to follow the law and comply, but we didn't want these units to be in areas where it's likely to be built up immediately. There were other areas that we did look at, like River Neck Road, where we knew that if we did put the zoning in those areas, it would likely be built out pretty quickly after we pass zoning. Also, our new MBTA zoning bylaw proposal is based on our current multifamily zoning and the UMass overlay, so everything that we are proposing is already part of the town zoning. Currently, we are including a 10% affordable housing requirement, but the Planning Board unanimously does want to increase that eventually to 15%. We do have to go through a state feasibility study in order to do that, and we have every intention of going through that process and then eventually increasing that requirement to 15%. And that is all I have. Happy to answer any questions.
Assuming that Milton, Town Milton has filed a legal suit against this law, if that suit is successful and we pass this, then these, these requirements would still remain with Chelmsford?
Yes, they would. We could always come back to a town meeting and reverse We could always come back to a town meeting and reverse the zoning. We could always pull out an overlay if, that's one of the things that the planning board is going to be looking at eventually, is looking at our current overlays that we have in town, making adjustments when needed. So if the Milton case is successful, we can always pull out the overlay.
Is there anything against putting an amendment on this proposal saying that if that law is ruled unconstitutional, these, this, they would become null and void? Is that reasonable? Is that possible?
My guess is that that probably wouldn't pass muster with the state because that's not a zoning requirement. So putting that in our zoning bylaws would not...
No, I'm not, I'm putting it in this, this town meeting vote.
Yeah, but the, the vote is for the specific bylaw to go into our zoning articles, and I don't, I, we don't have town council here tonight. We could ask them at town meeting, but my guess is that it would probably not pass muster with the state, because that's not a zoning bylaw that would be allowed in a zoning bylaw.
Okay, the other question, I, not being a lawyer, I don't know whether that's true or false, but the other question is, it seems that we're doing a quick fix here, we're assigning places that we don't think can comply. I mean, is that being sleight of hand and being dishonest with the state?
So the, the legislation that was passed does not require units to be built. It only requires zoning to be in place. So we are following the letter of the law in passing the zoning to allow zoning to be built.
But we would pick spaces that 99% probably won't happen?
Correct.
I mean, that seems like dirty pool to me, but again, I'm not a lawyer, so...
The other option we had was to pick areas that likely would be built, and then it would be a significant detriment to the town.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, a couple of questions. If, if this passes, the areas that have been designated, if there is space in those areas to add development that would then comply, could that happen pretty quickly?
Technically, yes, but there, in these spaces that we selected, there is no more space to actually develop.
Right, or that space is owned by those homeowners associations or something in it, but I'm just wondering if there's a possibility that those homeowners associations might decide, hey, we have this free space over here, we could build, we could allow building?
We've spoken to all of the homeowners associations and condo associations, none of them want this to be built.
My other question might sound weird, but is there a timing aspect here related to the objections that the state has made and that you're looking to correct, where if there was an opportunity for us to not vote on this now, but sometime between now and the fall when things have to be done, would that be a benefit to the process? Do you see my line of questioning?
Yeah, so there are multiple opinions on this. Some residents do want us to wait. However, my opinion, and I believe other board members share, most board members share this opinion, is that the state has already changed their mind on a couple's key pieces. So the longer we wait, the more, the more zoning the state sees from other towns, and the more ideas they get to potential changes that they want to make. If they, at this point, if the state says, we want to make this change to the guidelines, we are essentially obligated to figure out how to deal with that before the deadline. If we pass the zoning in our first meeting next week, then it becomes a bylaw that has to go through an entire process in order for us to change. So it actually buys some time in order to comply with the state.
A buffer of time.
Yeah.
This is mostly for my curiosity, but I suspect others are curious too. I appreciate that the warrant is the warrant and the areas that have been selected, the areas that have been selected, and I have not watched all of your meetings. But I look at that Radisson building, and I say to myself, and I appreciate we're trying to comply with the letter of the law, and as the previous speaker said, maybe not the spirit of the law, but I'm wondering if that, that property would help us comply to this, with the spirit of the law, and we could always do that in the future. I appreciate that. But is there any specific thing around that Radisson property that came up that we know about, about the ownership of it, what their plans are for it, et cetera?
Yeah, there were a few areas that we had discussed as part of this process where we initially thought it might be a great fit for this overlay. However, as we started discussing it, there were some things we wanted to do with those areas that we weren't able to do as part of this overlay. For example, increase the amount of affordable housing.
Yeah.
We wouldn't be able to if we put this overlay there. So we said as a board, let's table those areas for now, go back to those areas with maybe our own overlay to improve those areas and target those.
All right, excellent. One last piece of feedback, excellent presentation.
Thank you.
We've, we've come to these town meetings and seen presentations that are very hard to interpret, and I feel this one was nice and clear, so thank you.
Hi, Chris.
Hey.
Couple of questions, I just want to pivot off of what somebody said earlier. One step forward, okay. You had a slide about kind of the feedback from the state. I can see there was a lot of thought and a lot of great work from the planning board going into and addressing normally would be concerns of this type of potential development, namely, impact on infrastructure, and then leveraging the work that's already being done in terms of water and sewer and such. I think a lot of the other areas that were looked at, you know, that would have to be addressed. We already have the sewer moratorium and not to mention the water bans that start in May, and we see the signs all through town, and it's like more capacity here. What's the likelihood of the state essentially coming back and saying, Chelmsford, I see what you're doing, no, go, go back to zero and start over again?
We believe it's really low. They've given us that initial, the initial review. All the concerns that they've had are around that developer agreement. To be, those are the major concerns that they've had. Because they haven't talked about the areas that we've looked at, we really do think it's a low probability that they'll come back.
If I could be so bold as to make some suggestions, because this is going to be incredibly emotionally charged, I think it is a good idea doing it Thursday instead of tomorrow night and just essentially stopping the whole thing. Really focus on a few key takeaways of, we're leveraging projects that are already in play.
Mm-hmm.
We're leveraging projects in play that are already dealing with the infrastructure constraints, that this is about zoning and not immediate development. And what the planning board has done is tried to set up zoning that will have the best outcome for the Chelmsford citizenry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I actually just a question, the sort of the main threat, I guess you would say from, from the state is withholding certain types of funding and grants. Can anybody quantify in dollars and programs and services what that actually would be?
We anticipated that question, so we've got...
I'm glad I stood up then.
Good evening, John Souza, Town Finance Director. I researched this with our Community Development Director, Evan Belansky, and under the Mass Works Grant, Chelmsford's been awarded $1,484,000 since 2011, over, and it's been during three fiscal years. Under the Housing Choice Program, Chelmsford's been awarded $250,000 back in fiscal year 19. So if you add the three grant programs that Chelms, that are the focus of MBTA zoning, it comes up to $1,734,000.
And pardon my ignorance, but what exactly does that impact? I'm not sure, I can draw a line from that grant to something that happens in the town.
Okay, yeah, so to, to mention the specific programs under Mass Works, the town was awarded $475,000 to signalize the intersection of Bill Ricker and Elliott Street. This was due to, back when Cronus was, had a presence down at Bill Ricker Road. We were awarded $329,000 for streetscape improvements at Cushing Place, related to the grist mill complex that was built there. And then in 2022, we were awarded $680,000 for Groton Road water main upgrades due to a development at Jackson Road. Under the Housing Choice Program, we were awarded $250,000 for sidewalks along Turnpike Road from Warren Ave towards Bill Ricker Road, and that was related to the Kinlock Project.
Okay, yeah, so a lot of public work, type thing. Great, thank you.
I don't have a question. I got a statement, and I'm not debating, but I just want everybody to think about this over the weekend. They cannot, cannot build in Meadowwood, Windermere, or add anything more to the UMass property. And the only reason I can stand here and say this is because I've investigated it over and over and over again. At first, I thought they could take us by eminent domain. They cannot, because it's not a state that would come in. So I would like everybody in this room and anybody that's listening at home to think that the planning board has done the best project that I've ever seen in the 25 years I've been in this town. They have done a phenomenal job to make sure every resident of Chelmsford is not being hit in many different ways by an edited school department or a police addition or fire, and teachers, and pensions. So think about that over the weekend and think, think, think hard that this is good for us. And if it has to change because the federal Supreme Court says something, right now, Meadowwood, and I don't know how many people know this, we're zoned as light industry. We are not, and can, some industry can come in and take us. This is going to help us, and if they change it, then we're going to be safe. So thanks.
Hello. I was wondering if you looked at what other towns are doing, are they similar type concepts or solutions that you've come up with where it minimizes the risk, as it were? In which case, the state, which is trying to solve a real problem, is going to come up with a different approach to solve the same problem and then fight us in a different way?
Yeah, I mean, Kelly can answer some of that.
So Kelly Line, I'm a deputy director at Northern Middlesex Council of Governments. We have worked with seven other communities in Northern Middlesex that are subject to this law, and I can tell you that each one of them has a different approach. So some of them are actively looking to collaborate to increase housing production because they see this as a way of avoiding or minimizing an override, and for some of them, that is the case. Other communities are looking at it as maybe a split, where they're putting some of their district in places that don't have immediate viability for production. Others are in places that they want to see redeveloped, or they want to incentivize redevelopment. And so I think, you know, and then when you extrapolate that to what I know is happening across the state, we do know that 30 communities have already passed this law, or have passed zoning, so 30 of them, 177, I believe at least 24 to 30 are bringing this to town meeting this week or next week. So we will know more about which communities have passed that, but the strategies of each community are very specific to that community. Oh, sorry, they can't hear you.
How many other communities have followed the low-risk strategy we've taken versus, do you have an answer?
Sure, so, so I can only speak to Northern Middlesex for that, because that's who we have worked with. Chelmsford is the only community I'm aware of that has taken the strategy of identifying districts that have very low to no immediate or middle-term development opportunities.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. As we mentioned, there's, the moderator mentioned there's a companion article, which is 26, which is to oppose it. I don't see Doreen Deschler, who's a petitioner, here this evening, so those, her slides though are in your handout materials, so again, you can review those. So if you remember at the beginning of my remarks, I said that there were two items of significant that probably, looking back at history, would come out of this meeting. The first one is, is what we just heard the presentation on regarding the MBTA zoning. The second one is funding for a feasibility study for a new middle school. And so we're going to, John, if you can jump me to Article 8 and the slides and your materials, and we have Dr. Lang, our superintendent, here. And basically, what's going on here is the, through the efforts of the superintendent school committee and other town officials, including the select board, we've, we've advanced a effort to the state, which has been going on for several years. We started with trying to get a new high school for several years, that was unsuccessful. And now we've been invited into an eligibility stage for a middle school, and so we have to perform certain functions by the end of this current fiscal year for a new middle school, and for project eligibility stage, to get invited then into the feasibility stage, and one of those is to fund the feasibility study. And so the request for this is $1.8 million, it will be borrowed by the town, and whether or not the project ever occurs, we will get reimbursed at 52% of the feasibility study cost. It's been over 50 years since the town built a school, that would be in the new high school back in, which opened in 1974. And as people are very familiar, all of the town schools, the active elementary, middle, and high school are all constructed between 59 and, 1959 and 1974. And the effort here is to move us to be invited in by the state to the feasibility stage, and that would happen, we have 913 days, but the earliest we really see this happening would be in February of 2025. And then the state has told us that because of their funding schedules, that the town would not be eligible to advance the project to a vote stage or appropriation stage to approval before July of 2026. So that vote would probably, once all the feasibility work is done, is completed, that work would be, would occur, and the vote would probably be in fall of '26 or spring of '27, and then you're probably occupying a school sometime maybe 2029, 2030. So you can see, this is a six-year process on this, on this initiative. And so what I'm going to do is I'm going to invite Dr. Lang to come up here, as, as I will on Monday evening, to sort of just quickly just give you an overview. He has 10 quick slides, and, and our chair of the school committee is here, Dennis King, and, oh, Maria Santos, yeah, boy, they have, so we have significance here from the schools who can answer any questions on this. This will come up at Monday night session, and again, it's, as I noted, it's sort of a major item on Monday night, and obviously, the MBTA zoning will be the major item on, on Thursday evening. So you can just advance the slides.
All right, good evening. Good evening, hope all is well. Just going to share a little bit of information with you tonight, and happy to answer any questions, and obviously, we'll do the full presentation on Monday. Just as a side note, a few weeks back, we actually held a public information session to really go in-depth into this particular project, what we have before us, what we're going to be considering. We had some individuals attend, Chelmsford Telemedia was gracious enough to also tape it, and I did email a link out to all the town meeting reps with that particular video. It was about an hour and a half long, so I don't want to do that tonight, but, so you do have the link to the video, so you can kind of get the in-depth background on the project. But as the town manager indicated, this particular project would fund a feasibility study for a potential new school building in town. With this couple of different reasons, we obviously want to, to explore this. First and foremost, as Paul indicated, we haven't built a new school in over 50 years in town, and our schools are aging. We have some really solid buildings, our DPW does a great job... Our DPW does a great job of upkeeping the buildings. But we have some needs. We have some increased programming that's necessary in the schools. I'm also going to touch on the enrollment increases in town. So we've had a couple of different enrollment projections done over the years. We actually had NESDEC, who is a group that does that, come back and do an updated projection for us. And we are anticipated to increase by about 650 students over the next 10 years. And the bulk of that student enrollment is going to come at the elementary and middle school level. So one of the things that we wanted to do, obviously, taking a look at our building stock and the need for additional building space, a new building space, we also need to accommodate the students coming into the school system. I will say that the last two enrollment projections that NESDEC did for us since 2015 have actually been very conservative. We've enrolled more students than the projection even indicated. So when they indicate, you know, we're projected at about another 650 students over the next 10 years, I definitely see that happening. And, you know, my concern would actually be that it would be on the low side. So I don't think that is a large number. When they do a projection, obviously, the first five years of the projection are really solid, because they're actually basing that off of birth data and a number of actual births to Chelmsford, so we know which kids are zero to five, who ultimately, coming up to kindergarten. You then have to start taking a look at the data to do the projections for the outline years. But again, they typically have been conservative. So when we filed our application with the state originally to get invited into the eligibility period, we specified that we wanted to look at, and we were approved to look at, three specific possibilities. And these are three very different possibilities for space. The first would actually be just a complete new, two-grade level school, grades five and six. Parker, at this point, actually services all grade five and six students in the district. And then they go on to McCarthy Middle School for seven and eight. So it would be a one-for-one replacement of Parker Middle School. Approximately 800 kids is what we have enrolled at the school now, just so you have some sense of the size. A second possibility that they would look at with us is to create a town-wide middle school, grades five to eight, kind of going back to all the grades in the same building. That would obviously be the largest of these options. That, bless you, that would be approximately, you know, a 1,600-student school, which is significant. And then the last option, which I think is actually really interesting to us, would be to do a three-grade level school. So to do a new grade four, five, and six. And what that option would actually allow us to do is to move a grade level out of our elementary schools. We could move our fourth grade out, which would free up about 100 to 125 student capacity in our four elementary schools to extend their useful life. Everyone in town would actually benefit, all of the students, from the new school, grades four, five, and six. And then again, four, five, and six, from a school department perspective, is very developmentally age-appropriate. Curriculum typically comes in those particular grade denominations. So that's an interesting project for us. And that would be kind of the middle project. So that would be about a 1,200-student school, because you're talking three grade levels. So we have those three options. And one of the things that we really wanted to try to do, again, we know we haven't built a school in quite some time. We know it is expensive to build a school. We wanted to try to accomplish the very most that we could with one project. And not, like, there are some communities now that are building, say, multiple elementary schools, or multiple middle schools, and things like that. But if we actually were able to do this, just one project, it would actually obviously benefit town-wide, our middle school population, but also our elementary school population, because again, we can move an elementary grade level out. When we took a look at the two middle schools, Parker was identified as the priority school, because it poses many more short- and long-term issues with us if it were to remain online, and it needed to be renovated and upgraded. And I'll touch on that in a few moments. This, again, just kind of outlays those three different options for us to look at. Again, it's just the one-for-one replacement of Parker. It doesn't help us at all with our enrollment. So yes, there'd be a new grade five, six school, but it doesn't do anything to help with the elementary enrollment in the district. The second option would be, obviously, we built a brand-new grade five-to-eight school. Parker would come offline, because if you do build a school with the state, a school has to come offline. So Parker would come offline. McCarthy would then be available, and potentially could do a grade level realignment with McCarthy, and have that also serve elementary school students. So that would help us enrollment-wise. And then the third option, again, I mentioned, would be to do a new grade four, five, six. And if we were to do that, our elementary schools could turn into K3. That also helps us enrollment-wise. So options two and three not only give us a new space, but also help us with enrollment. Option one does give us a new space, but it does not help us at all with our enrollment. And we know enrollment is going to be an issue for us at the elementary school. So again, we are really considering this for a couple of different factors. One, we do have this enrollment issue that we have to deal with at the elementary and middle school level. We're at capacity. All of those schools are operating with modular classrooms at this point. If you remember, I came to town meeting back in 2017, and you supported building modular buildings at each of our elementary school sites. We added 22 classrooms. They're great. They're actually modular buildings, not just an old-school kind of modular classroom. And they're certainly going to have a lifespan of probably close to 30 years. So those are helping us at the elementary school level. But we have the more traditional kind of old-school modular classrooms at McCarthy and Parker now. Parker actually has 10 of those classrooms that are over now 20 years old. And those were not rated to actually go for 20 years. So the town has been doing, again, a very good job of upkeeping them, but those are going to have to be changed out. Again, I mentioned on the enrollment, Parker itself, again, we have another slide in a few minutes. It just talks about the functionality of the space of the two middle schools. It's the more challenging space to work with, particularly if we were to do any kind of renovations. We wanted to keep in mind that any of the options that we actually considered really benefited all of the kids and all of the families in town. We didn't want to build, say, under the four elementary schools we have now, build, say, just a brand-new South Row, and then the other three elementary school communities don't benefit. I think that would be a very hard sell for the community. Even if we were to tell them, over time, we were going to try to get to their school, it does take six to seven years to actually go through this process. So by the time you got to the fourth school, and again, that's budget and, you know, town meeting approval permitted, it would be a very long process. So we wanted to make sure that this happened. One of the big steps, and it's actually worked out very well for us this year, was that middle school grade level realignment. We used to operate Parker and McCarthy as both grade five-to-eight schools. This year, even before going into this project, all of the grade five and six students now go to Parker, and all of the grade seven and eight students go to McCarthy. So under any of these scenarios, any student in those grade levels are going to benefit from the new space. It wouldn't be, say, half the town, or quarter of the town. All of the kids would be going through that particular building. And I do think, and again, this is going to be a costly project. There is expense included with a new school built. But our reimbursement rate with the state is 52.26% at this point. So for us to be able to leverage a new school building and actually receive over half of the funding from the state, I think is very significant for this town. We wouldn't be able to do it likely on our own. And I think it's a good, you know, it took us actually seven years to get to this point, applying with the MSBA to even get invited into eligibility. And for us to be able to be invited in and actually have the opportunity to look at these possibilities, and look at a potential new school, and to actually have it be more than half reimbursed by the state, I think is significant for this town. I think we really could build a very nice building. You know, again, structurally sound, very operational, that would really benefit the generations to come. And to have it be more than half paid by the state, I do think is significant. We can't really underscore that. This chart, again, just talks, excuse me, a little bit about the age of the buildings. And town manager mentioned earlier, our youngest school is actually the high school that came online 50 years ago, and then they increase in age. And the last column just kind of notes for you, how many of these buildings actually are operating with modular spaces or modular classrooms? So in addition to the core spaces we have, we're really kind of keeping things afloat right now with a lot of modular spaces in the buildings, because our enrollment truly has increased, and it's going to continue to increase. So at Parker, again, and this is why we actually took a look at this particular building, one of the things that we know we would have to do is replace the modular classrooms in that building. Now, we ran into this challenge when we did the modular classrooms at the four elementary schools, because none of our elementary schools are sprinkled. You know, we don't have fire suppression systems in our school buildings. So because of code, we actually couldn't attach the modular classrooms to the existing buildings, but that was going to kick in different code requirements. And we were going to have to bring the buildings up to code, both ADA and fire-wise, and that was going to become incredibly costly. So fortunately, when the modulators were put into Parker, the code wasn't at that particular level, it wasn't in effect. So the Parker modular classrooms are attached to the building. We have 10. But if they were to be replaced, under the current date code, we wouldn't actually be able to have them be attached to the building, which would be very difficult on the existing site to have detached modular classrooms and have everything really be coherent within the building. One of the biggest challenges, again, for us at Parker over the McCarthy site is the building is not ADA accessible. So we do have areas in the building, again, the building has been very well upkept. But if we have, we do have staff and students from time to time, say, in a wheelchair or things like that, that need to move their way through the building. If you're on the lower level of the building, it's a three-story building, you actually have to leave the building to go into, like, a lift on the outside of the building to get up to the second floor, to then be able to get to the elevator to get to the third floor. It's just really not conducive to the way schools would be built these days. The design at the time, and again, this is quite some time ago, had a lot of kind of combined classrooms, joined classrooms. There are different pockets of the building where if I want to get to a particular classroom, I actually have to walk through someone else's classroom to get to that classroom. And again, you just don't see that in construction these days. It's very disruptive to things that are happening in space. But again, I think the biggest issue for us would be if we were to do any significant structural upgrades to Parker, it's going to kick in these required upgrades by current code. And to bring it handicap accessible, to make all of those adjustments, again, to add a fire suppression system to the school, add new modular classrooms, we're talking millions of dollars. So that's why we ultimately ended up picking Parker as the school project. The, and again, I have a number of different slides in the packet, even they have tonight. On Monday, I'm actually going to only review about the first nine or 10. But I do have the backup slides beyond that. In case someone asks a question, I can refer to it. Or if you wanted to read it a little more in-depth, you could. I actually have received a lot of comments from individuals who just went and watched the video of the presentation we had, and who was able to answer a lot of their questions. I had a couple of good phone calls with folks. So just to have the data, I think, is important. But what I did is kind of call out at least the 10-year projection, just in a little bit of an easier format, so that you can really see over the next 10 years, I said 650, but, you know, the projection, 669 for additional students. We have plenty of capacity at the high school for students, so I'm really not concerned at all about the high school enrollment. The two enrollments that really do concern me are elementary and middle school. We certainly don't have capacity within our existing four elementary schools to take on another 200 students. And we certainly don't, at the two middle schools that we have operating now, just even with the number of modular classrooms we have, have the ability to take on another 300 students. So by advancing one of these projects, I do think the timeline would work out that, if everything went well, around the 2030, 2031 school year is when the building would actually open. And, you know, we would be able to make do and utilize our spaces to get us to that point. But beyond that, if we don't do something, you know, we really are going to have some issues space-wise. As far as the $1.8 million for the feasibility study goes, we took a look, because we had to arrive at that figure. So we took a look at data from the MSBA, Mass School Building Authority, with regard to what other feasibility studies have cost for elementary schools, middle schools, high schools. They have good data going all the way back to 2014. Obviously, during COVID, there was a little bit of a gap where there wasn't a lot of building going on. There wasn't a lot of procurement of OPM and designer services. But kind of came to the $1.8 million as a middle-of-the-road number. There are certainly projects that are getting into the $2 million-plus range. There were some that were funded closer to $1,500,000. Those particular projects that were funded on the lower end are not receiving a lot of interest as far as OPM and designer services are going. I do think the $1.8 million is a good fair point that's in the middle to be able to get us a competitive group of architects and engineers and project managers who will be interested in this. The feasibility study, the bulk of that money goes to pay for the onus project manager and the architect or the design firm that would actually be working with us as we go through looking at all of the different options. Again, we have to fully vet those three options that we've been approved to look at with the MSBA. We have to take a look at sites in town where we potentially would build a new school. We have to look at our existing programs and spaces within the buildings, how we're using them. We have to work with the community to figure out, you know, what we'd like to see over the next 10, 15, 20 years. There would be a lot of community input along this process to really get to the desired school and the desired grade level configuration we would want for this particular project. In the end, we do know that, at this point, you know, we have been kind of certified at 52.26%. So if you just take a look at the numbers, we're obviously looking for the town meeting appropriation or authorization in April. This project feasibility, as Paul indicated, we wouldn't actually be invited into feasibility until the earliest would be February of '25. So we wouldn't actually need to borrow or bond that money until we got to that point to bring the OPM and the architect on board. This would just be a vote to authorize and allow us to do that at that particular time. And in the end, the state would end up reimbursing $940,000, and the town would end up contributing about $860,000 toward the cost of that project. That would actually get us through about a 14- to 16-month period, where, again, we have to do all this work. We have to put a procurement out to get an OPM onboard. We have to get a designer onboard, work with the community, get the input, figure out what we actually would want to construct. These are just some of the different things that they would actually work with us on, as I mentioned. Ultimately, working with the project team that we have, we would come up with our preferred schematic, our preferred design for this particular school. It would then go to the MSBA. Again, the earliest that that would get accomplished is the summer of '26. And then after the summer of '26, we would have to come back to the town. We would actually have the project we'd want to fund. We'd have all the cost estimates and things like that. And then that would require a town-wide vote to approve the project. So timeline-wise, we have, again, we have to kind of progress between, April 1st is when our official eligibility period kicked off. That goes all the way to December. There are eight different steps that we have to complete. We completed step one, which was the initial compliance certification a week or so ago. The feasibility vote is one of the stages. We have to put a building committee together. We have to do a lot of different due diligence along the way. And we have until the end of the calendar year to get that done. We then would hope to get on the MSBA agenda, and I don't see any reason why we wouldn't, for the February of '25 meeting. Hopefully, at that point, we would be invited into feasibility. And at that point, we would actually, again, begin to procure the OPM, the architect, for that 14 to 16 months. That brings us to the summer of '26. At that point, we really know cost, project, what we want to do, and we come back to the town for a vote to move forward. And as the manager indicated, I'd really like to believe this is going to move forward. But, you know, the eligibility period is reimbursed either way. So we do receive reimbursement for that as we go through the project. Oh, okay, that's it. So that's a little snapshot for you. Again, I didn't want to do the hour-and-a-half presentation that I did the other night. But happy to answer any questions you have. I'm also going to send an email out Friday just with links to all of the different little reports we have so far. On our district website, we have been adding different content so people have information. And again, I'm going to send out that video link to everyone just so that they can watch it before Tuesday, if, I'm sorry, before Monday, if they want to. And we'll be back to present that as well. So happy to answer any questions.
David Rand, 167 Dunstable Road. I was curious. $1.8, you put that out for bid now?
I'm sorry?
I didn't catch whether you put that $1.8 out for bid, or how do you pick the people for the feasibility study?
Right, so the $1.8 million would be funding the onus project manager and the designer to actually do the work with us. So if we move into feasibility around February of '25, we would then, that would be like the dollar amount that we have to secure those two individuals. The MSBA has standard kind of bid documents and templates you have to go through to put a request for proposal out, to have firms submit proposals to review. The building committee that gets established would actually go through and rank. And we're able to select the onus project manager on our own. And that's kind of like our person who would really be overseeing the day-to-day operations of the school. They act as our agent in the process. We then would go through a separate procurement to bring a designer onboard. The MSBA now has what they call a designer selection committee and a designer selection process. So the MSBA is much more involved this time around building a school than maybe they were 10 years ago. But there's another RFP that would go out. We'd be seeking architects and engineering firms to do the specifications for the build. MSBA would also weigh in on that, and we would ultimately award a contract. So that's what the $1.8 million primarily would be for, the hiring of those two people. But they're both full, like, RFPs. We would have to go through a procurement process. Contracts would have to be issued, and then work would begin.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Peter Schultz, precinct eight.
Peter Schultz, precinct eight, two questions really. One, with the facility age chart. You know, center school, fully renovated in 1999. I would argue it's still one of the nicer schools in the town.
It is.
You gave a bunch of reasons why Parker, there are a lot of expenses that have to be concerned. But I guess the question will come up, why not renovate Parker? I mean, the center came out beautifully.
I think the issue with Parker is again, it just, it presents a very different set of challenges than, than Center did. The, just the, the build of the school, the way it's laid out, is really not conducive to schooling these days. In addition to the, you know, the code issues obviously would come up. The ADA compliance would come up. That wasn't as big of an issue at Center School. It's a one-level school. You know, we just, we didn't run into those same issues. As we go through the feasibility process, as much as in the end, I would love to see there be a new school, the MSBA does also make you evaluate your schools to see if, you know, a renovation or an addition would suffice as an option. So we would look at that as part of the, the whole process. That would still be covered under the 1.8 million dollars. I just have a feeling that it just would not be cost effective to do that. But that does still have to be vetted as we go through the process.
Number two, where would you build it?
Well, that, that gets determined during feasibility. So what I can tell you is the vast majority of schools are built on municipally-owned property. Because if we were to, and we can build the school wherever in Chelmsford we'd like to. But the MSBA does not participate in any site acquisition or, you know, kind of land clearings and things along those lines. So most communities really build the project on municipal land, so you're not dealing with land takings. Oftentimes what happens in these projects is if you have, and most of us schools have field space next to them, one of the first things you look at is do you build the school on the existing field space? And then when that's done, you knock the, the old school down and you convert that to the open space. So that is, is a possibility at Parker. We also had identified early on, just when we were doing some of our longer-term planning, if you're looking at McCarthy Middle School, in the back left corner of the property, is potentially enough square footage or yardage to be able to, to build a school there? Based on, is it just going to be a two-grade level school or three? The four would be very difficult to do. Another property that was going to have to be examined and looked at is up on Graniteville. You know where the softball field is? In the back corner there, potentially there and kind of working out would potentially be enough space for a field. We'd have to weigh the pros and cons of taking away field space because it wouldn't be conducive for the high school to have to go over to Parker to use that field if that school came down. But you have to actually work with your designer and the OPM to identify all of those different properties. I would tell you that I would recommend if we did this, it'd be on a town-owned property. It just makes the process go that much smoother. It's also just more cost effective in the end. But you have to actually vet out each of those. And based on what size of the building you actually, what kind of footprint you want to have, that does, you know, somewhat kind of control that. You also have to have the discussion, if you have slightly less, you know, footage than you need, you know, is it a two-story building? Is it a three-story building? So you have to go through, through that whole process, but that would come in feasibility.
And that also answers my question about when construction happens, what are you doing about continued capacity?
When what?
When you're constructing.
Oh.
You're not, you're not tearing something down and putting something in the same place, therefore you lose capacity.
Yeah, you'd have to keep the existing facilities that we have operational throughout the duration. And then normally what would happen is you would enter your new building, and then you would begin the process of taking down the old.
Thank you.
We'd have to keep them running concurrently.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Hey Brian.
Thank you. That was a good presentation. What do we do with the kids in the meantime? You said we're going to pick up 669 kids over the next 10 years. I assume ideally, you're going to build this in five years?
Yeah, so, I mean, again, the hope would be that over the next six years, you know, from today, or from July for us on, would be when we go all through these different stages. And then around 2030 is when the building would open. So we do need for the next five or six years to be dealing with the number of students that we have. So we're going to have to be creative with the spaces that we have in the buildings. We enjoy, I think, and I wouldn't want to change this. We have very good class sizes now, really at the elementary, middle. And again, we don't have space capacity issues at the high school, but the elementary a little, and middle a little tight. We're going to have to continue to use the modular classrooms that we, we have. You obviously wouldn't go and, and putting new modular classrooms in if you were going to be taking the building down in that time. But again, when we look at the, the chart on size, you know, we're really kind of focusing right up through year six, you know, is, are the numbers that I have to kind of figure out where they would, where they would all fit in. But we'd just be fully utilizing the spaces that we, we currently have. Again, I, I don't see us going to add, say, another school or modules for the time being if we know in 2030 that a new school will be coming online.
I know, I know the parents that have kids in the program right now, it's like, you know, we finally got the, the packed center at the high school and my kids graduated. So you don't get to do kindergarten over again. So this is for the benefit of kids five, six, 10 years out, not the current families that would be voting on this. And where do we come up with another 13 million dollars a year? That's a lot of kids. We're gonna, we're gonna pick up, I guess because of additional housing? It sounded like we weren't building more housing with this MWR.
I'm losing you on two things though. What was the first thing you said?
$20,000 a child, and you're adding 669.
No, but you, you said something before that.
$13 million?
No, before that. I thought you asked me a question I didn't answer.
Well, I, I was asking, where are we coming up with the funds to pay for the kids? I assume the school's going to be a quarter million dollars. But if you add 669 kids.
Are you talking with the school construction costs or just the general operating for adding kids to the district?
We're going to add kids to the district.
Correct.
Which means we need to build a school.
Correct.
The schools today aren't adequate, so we have to build a school for a quarter million dollars. But more importantly to me, whether we build a school or not, at $20,000 a child, it's 13, 13 million dollars added to our budget to pay for.
Over the next, over the next 10 years. Right.
That shocks me more than the school need.
Yeah. It, it's costly. I mean, obviously, we are going to be seeing increase in kids. It, it's not a direct one-for-one. Every time a child enters the district, you have to add 20,000 because we have to take a look at, you know, our class sizes. We again, enroll by geography. So if you live in a particular neighborhood, you go to a particular school, we have to take a look at that in a consideration. You know, last year, we did receive a little increase in chapter 70 money to try to help us. This year, unfortunately, we didn't. You know, you'd love to see that that was going to come into play.
First time in 30 years.
Yeah, no, but again, this year was disappointing when it didn't happen, you know? So it's not something that we can rely on. But we do know, and I'm very confident over the next five years, you know, at least because we know the birth data, that the kids are coming. When the NSDEC did the, the enrollment report and the projection for us, you know, one of the things that they did cite is they are starting to see some homes turnover in the community, that there are some, you know, multifamily homes obviously lead to more school-aged children, that you do have some families passing homes on to younger kids, who, families who then have kids. Some of our residents, you know, selling homes, maybe downsizing and whatnot. And we have more kids coming in that way. The enrollment projection did take into consideration any of the projects that were permitted in town. So it did take into consideration the west campus because that was permitted and they were already building on that. They worked closely with Evan and the town planning office to take a look at any of the projects that were coming down the pipe. Some of the kids are certainly coming from that. But a lot of it is turnover of our existing stock to, to more families.
So more, more, more stress on the current homes rather than, rather than adding a bunch of additional housing?
Yeah. I don't think adding, yeah, adding a lot of like additional homes didn't really.
That wasn't in the projection?
Well, no, I, I don't think there's a lot of space in town. I mean, that was certainly something they looked at, but there wasn't a lot of like buildable, like single-family homes and things like that in the equation. It was more, again, they looked at anything that was pulled permitting-wise. And again, it was a little bit of the, the west campus. Obviously, they looked at some of the developments. We're not getting a lot of kids, but the development on like Turnpike and Turnpike Road over near South Rowan Center, kind of both pulled from that. Going out on the Littleton Road, you know, we do get some families from there. Not a ton, but you know, they would go to the Byham District. But that was all taken into consideration in the projection.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for the presentation, Dr. Lee, precinct 11. Quick, a couple of looking ahead questions beyond this and beyond the feasibility and getting on to the construction project. You addressed the question of potential locations and how we go about doing it, facility size essentially. And this may, this question may go to John Sousa or town manager, but what is an estimated and current, this would be on override, I'm assuming, in whatever we float alone or bonds or something around that? What is the current four-year average? Of course, inflation kills everything and all of that, but average bond rating dollars for such a, I don't know what the amount of, you know, dollars will be, but per 10 million or per 25 million dollars or whatever it is. Is there any bond interest rate calculation out available at all? And again, I understand this is not particularly 1.8 million dollars.
No, no, I get what you're saying, yeah. And I think from, from my perspective, it's very difficult to predict like which project we would actually advance because again, you've got three very different.
Understood, right. So that, I understand that each project could, you know, could be a $50 million project or a $250 million project. We could vary all this.
Are you asking more like in general terms?
General terms, what is the current average bond rating, so to speak? So if there is, there are people in town who understand sensitivity analysis and finance. They can go around thinking about this as a cost structure, a previous speaker asked them questions, but just.
Yeah, so the, the actual, if, if the town was to vote in the future for a school, that would have to be done as a proposition two-and-a-half debt exclusion. So not, not so much the feasibility study that we're talking about tonight, but the school. I mean, if we're talking in the neighborhood of, you know, total cost 200 million, possibly a hundred million dollar cost of the town, that would need to be a proposition two-and-a-half debt exclusion. So we're, we're fortunate in one way that we're paying, we've been rapidly paying down the excluded debt over the last two decades for the sewer project. And so we're getting to a place, ultimately, it will be a vote of, it will be a decision made by the town voters but at the ballot box, but it, a debt exclusion would have to be, you know, debt exclusion vote would have to be taken to fund the bonds for the construction of the school. Because we would not be able to include that debt service in the non-excluded debt, which is paid within the town's tax levy. We just wouldn't have that capacity for the, the actual school project. So it, it would need to be under debt exclusion.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Lang, more questions for you? The projection for class licenses for the next 10 years. School buildings, as we know already, lasted for about 50-plus years, give or take. Are there other mega trends from other towns that have gone similar statistical waves of, you know, people moving in, aging out, or leaving and other things that could help us project out a little bit more as to what the demands is? Because you don't want to build just for another 400 or 7,000 kids. And a mega trend changes the population around here completely. And who knows, a new MB, a, a second generation MBTA may mandate more capacity requirement, which means more kids coming in.
Durant, when.
Thoughts about that?
Yeah, I, I think, in my experience, and I've been doing this for a bit, again, like those five-year projections are solid, right? Because they're based on real birth. When you get five to 10, their projections and their methodology is, is pretty solid. I do think when you get beyond 10 years, it starts to get a little gray. I don't know of a community that actually has greater than a 10-year projection with any accuracy that they've actually used to say build a particular school. I do know that when we get into this with the MSBA, one of the things that they want to work with you on is making sure you're kind of right sizing your build, that you're building for certainly the current population you have and what's within that five to 10-year projection. I, I will verify for you, but I do not believe the MSBA lets you really look beyond 10 years to figure out because they're funding a, a significant piece of this. They don't want you to overbuild, or they don't want you to build a school that's just going to be, have unnecessary space. Ironically, when you look at like some of our communities in the area, a lot are actually experiencing decline in school-aged population. We happen to be experiencing an increase. And again, it's actually, you know, been relatively steady. We've seen as a district, our number overall of students has been, you know, relatively flat over the last number of years. But when you look deeper into the data, our high school population has actually been going down while our elementary and middle are going up. So what we're seeing is that trend obviously was a solid number, and it's going to continue. And I do think over the next five to 10 years, that is going to continue. It would be a discussion we would have to have with the MSBA. All likelihood, I don't let them, see them letting us go out beyond 10 years to try to figure out like what size of a school we should be building. Oftentimes, you know, like Tucksbury is actually finishing, you know, a school, and they're kind of then starting the next school. They take a look at their space and, and kind of figure out even within town where they might want to put a particular school. We're trying to, in this particular project, do the very most that we can with one build. And that's why I think, you know, for us, certainly the next, you know, 20-plus years, I'm fairly confident to say, I do believe by doing one of these two options that have the added space would give us capacity within the district to really be in pretty good shape.
Javi, thank you, and there's maybe more questions. But hopefully, we're also looking at more advanced strategies, which include multi-shift schools, a morning shift and an afternoon shift, potentially. Many other countries do that. For highly populated conditions, we should not assume that we should only have everybody go at the same time and come out because different kids could do that. So I'm also suggesting that that might be considered because $250 million plus others may be some things that a lot of community members may not like it.
Right.
So just leaving it as a strategy point.
I hear what you're saying. I don't know of another school system in Massachusetts that's looked at a multi-staggered elementary, middle school.
Doesn't matter, we can be leaders.
What's that?
We can be leaders.
Okay.
So I'm just suggesting.
I'll make a note, I'll make a note of that.
Yeah, I believe this is a quick question, but last town meeting, we passed, I think, something called the Enhance Energy Stretch Code, so on, that everything's going to be electric is, is the proposed. I know this is feasibility, but are we considering that? Is it all going to be 100% electric and no gas, no other fuels at the school in the future?
I, I truly don't know. So at this point in time.
That, that would probably bring up the price, wouldn't it?
Yeah, I, I, again, it's not my area of background.
Especially the operating costs.
Right, it's something we obviously have to look at. One of the things I will tell you is when you get to feasibility and you're working with the architect on design, they do give different kind of ratings or different points, if you want to call it, for doing like energy efficient type strategies in your building and building a different like environmental strategies to your building. Sometimes you'll actually get a little bit of a bigger reimbursement rate for doing that. We can take a look and see like what those offset costs are.
You don't know of any other schools that have, that have kind of been that.
Oh, no, I do, I don't know about strict, straight electric. I do know that there are other schools that have taken into consideration certain, like environmental factors. Like there was a school recently that built a, like a rooftop almost that had a, some type of like a, well, solar panels, yes, but it had some kind of, almost like a green garden type thing where it had water that was actually like reused and, and whatnot. We can certainly look at that with the designer and the architect. I don't know what would add to cost, but it's certainly a step that you can go through when you're in feasibility, just to at least vet it out and see if there is a potential savings, if there's not, if a credit may outweigh, you know, doing it or not doing it. It can all be looked at. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thanks, Paul. Thank, thank you, Dr. Lang. Okay, so we're, we're here at 8:30, and we've discussed really the highlights of the two town meetings. But because it is a spring annual town meeting, we have the traditional articles, which basically in this case will be about 24 other articles. And John's going to advance the slide basically back to the beginning of your presentation materials. And one of the things that was noted by the moderator after we hear reports, we're going to hear from Representative Arciero Monday evening briefly. Then we also have a report real quick on the status of the Coolest Farm acquisition, the Fire Station Study Committee, and then financial overview. And you can see, we, we're bundling the 16 of the remaining 24 articles into a consent agenda. And what, what all that means is, is we'll consider them all together and, but for tonight's purposes, into one vote. Because they are procedural, and you'll see as we go through them. That's why there are not many slides on them, and there won't, there traditionally has not been much debate. So the first one that we begin with, and it's on the consent agenda, and we'll begin with the processes, we, we have some modifications to the current fiscal year's budget. Remember, we, our fiscal year starts July 1, and it runs through June 30. So we're adopting a budget now that will, will take place in a couple of months and then run 12 months after that. So as you can imagine, circumstances arise during the course of a fiscal year that weren't foreseen when the budget was developed, and so we make some adjustments. And once again, this year, we have adjustments as well. They're listed and you have them on your handouts. It basically, they total, we're running about, right now, we're running 156 million dollar budget. We have $488,000 of adjustments. We're funding it from the Finance Committee Reserve Fund and from our. We're funding it from the Finance Committee Reserve Fund and from our snow and ice balance left over from the winter. And it's in a variety of areas and you can, the details provided in your packet, I'm not going to read all the slides. But basically what happens during the course of the year, mostly at personnel. We have retirements, we have unexpected increases of activities that take place. And we have to pay, we have to pay out the cost for those people who have accrued time and so forth. And so that's happened in the municipal administration side, our assistant collector left. Before the end of this fiscal year, our human resources director will be retiring after thirty years and so forth. And then there were some studies that were going on, beginning to the Fire Station Study Committee. We, we, we also, we needed to, we needed to hire a, an appraiser to assist the Board of Assessors with a, with a abatement application for a commercial property. We also have to, we also have done some appraisal services for commercial and so forth. And the same thing in the police department, we've had unexpected turnover in terms of retirements, as well as a couple of officers have gone to the state police. And again, those were not foreseen in the, in their numbers, so we have incurred costs for that. And again, you can see them have relisted. And in the fire department, we had some unexpected cost increases regarding repairs to fire apparatus. It's just, not only is it costly, it takes a long time. And we had to repair our microwave system and so forth. So that's really what happens here. It's basically, it's, it's just moving funds around in this year to, to close us out till June thirtieth. The next article, once that's completed, is in Neshoba Tech Assessment. Dr. Denise Pidgen and members of the school committee, including Harrison Mayotte, who's here this evening as our alternate member, will be presenting the Neshoba Tech operating budget. That was unveiled at the end of February to local officials and it's been approved thus far in air. They've run into, if you look at today's paper, they've run into some issues in terms of funding in communities that are at the levy limit in Townsend and Pepperell. So what has to happen is two-thirds of the district's eight communities have to approve the budget. And so we, we will take our vote. It's a four million dollar budget roughly from Neshoba Tech. And in your, in your packet is, are the slides that Dr. Pidgen will go through. Basically, it's mostly driven by state. And I'll, I'll show you the slide in her, in her budget. And part of it's enrollment driven. You know, we're, we're the largest community, twenty-eight percent, almost twenty-nine percent of the students come from Chelmsford to Neshoba Tech. We're up six students for the current year out of the, out of the forty-two increase. But most importantly, because of that, the state in its funding formula, oops, I must have hit that too hard. The state calculates what the town has to contribute to the, to the district. And that's that column that says town's minimum contribution. By state law and state budget funding, we have to fund Neshoba Tech at, at three point five million dollars for the base budget. And then there are additional costs, such as the transportation, additional assessment for their debt service and so forth. And so basically, what ends up happening is, is our assessment goes up to four, four million thirty-seven thousand. But again, most of that increase is driven by the state's revenue formula that caught, that results in our, our, our assessment going up. So, so that's really going to be the challenge as, and it's going to be the challenge for those communities who couldn't have overrides, because the state doesn't care how you fund it, they just care that you fund it. And so when you see in Chelmsford, this is the Chelmsford assessment, our increase goes up for the total for the district. Their, their budget goes up. And you can see for Chelmsford, our increase is a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars, but a hundred and sixty-six thousand nine. So we need to wonder if there's a pointer on it, John. But anyway, but you can see, well, basically, essentially, our total increase is mandated by the state. And so that's really what's happening with Neshoba Tech. They run a great program and, and the Doc Pidgen will go through the slide showing how they're one of the most cost efficient districts and so forth. And obviously, the fact of, of Chelmsford sending increased enrollment there attests to the fact of, of the quality of the school. And, and also the, the change in demographics, there are a number of students who are now looking towards vocations in alternative pathways, either to college and, and technical colleges such as MIT and so forth, as well as those who are going into traditional trades such as carpentry, plumbing and so forth. And so that's, that's what's happening with the Neshoba Tech budget. So again, details are in your packet. She's also presented at the Finance Committee, if you want to go back over the Finance Committee video of their meeting as well. So that's happening with the Neshoba Tech budget. Following that, we'll take on the Chelmsford Public Schools budget. The budget request is seventy-three point eight eight million dollars. Dr. Lang will return to the podium on, on Monday evening and just highlight, and you have these slides in here, I'm not going to read it. But basically, what you're going to see in these slides is their, their increases in staffing really have to do with student services, i.e. psychological, special education, and services to students, as well as they are, they do have some academic mainstream issues such as a new math curriculum and so forth. And again, those are all presented in their, in their budget. So that's, that's the Chelmsford Public Schools budget that will be presented by Dr. Lang. And they'll have booklets out, you know, as you come in on Monday evening that detail their budget. It's also available on the school department's website. So that's where that goes. And once, once we then complete the actions on the vocational school budget and the Chelmsford Public Schools budget, we then go to the next article, which is the Town's General Operating Budget. And again, you have all these slides, we, we maintain this traditional budgetary categories. You have the Blue Book, or if you don't, you can get one on the way out, that details all, all the town's budgetary line items and funding. Basically, as I mentioned at the outset, we're, we're now going into a hundred and sixty-two point six million dollar operating budget. Most of that unfortunately is funded in Chelmsford by the property tax levy. We are at our levy limit under proposition two and a half and we will live and abide by that levy limit. We also, we also receive about fifteen percent of our budget comes from state aid. The twelve and a half million comes from local receipts such as permit fees, meals tax, hotel tax, motor vehicle excise being almost half of that total. And then other miscellaneous available funds that go from the town. So you can see in a, in a summary, the Chelmsford Public Schools budget goes up by three point two million dollars or four and a half percent. The other departmental budgets of the town go up by one point three million or three point, basically three and a half percent. Benefits and insurance goes up by two million dollars or six and two-thirds percent. And our debt service is actually declining to ten point five million, which is a decrease of about a half million to, by, or four and a half percent. And these are significant expenditure adjustments. You can see they're all personnel related primarily. Health insurance, you know, we, we provide health insurance for active, for, for almost a thousand retirees, as well as hundreds of active employees. Those premiums are going up over six, about six and a half percent. We, we have a retirement assessment from the, from the Retirement Board, based on our actuarial studies, they do it every two years. This is the second and final year of the one that was done two years ago. So that's seven hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Employee compensation are basically the, the union contracts and non-union pay scales. And then we have, like all communities, solid waste and recycling costs are going up for, for, for the collection of the waste, as well as the disposal of the waste at the waste energy facilities. Yeah, we are, we are providing funding for the, support the operations of the Chelmsford Center for the Arts. Our, our non-excluded debt service, meaning our regular capital debt service is going up by eighty-seven thousand. Medicare taxes, basically your payroll tax that we require like businesses to pay into the Medicare system. And then our property casualty workers' comp insurance. You'll see these items everywhere. You'll see them in the Neshoba Tech when they talk about their budgetary increases. If you read the paper, but what Lowell's talking about for their budget, it's the same thing. How are they getting it from retirement assessment and so forth? We're a labor organization. We, we provide services. We educate students, we patrol streets, we fight fires, we perform public works, operations. Again, so what we're doing in this budget is a level service budget, basically almost a level staffing budget. And because we, we just, we're just hanging on at this point. And, and one of our concerns is, is we're, we're looking at how we move forward into the future. So that's what's going to happen with that budget. That, once that's approved, we then go to the Finance Committee's Reserve Fund. We, as, as noted earlier, under the adjustments to this year's budget, every year, we set aside four hundred thousand dollars out of a hundred and sixty-two point six million dollar budget to address items that come up unforeseen or unexpected or emergency during the course of the year. If we, if we cannot get to a town meeting and it's that truly urgent, the Finance Committee has the authority to expend these monies directly to meet the extraordinary unforeseen circumstance that's in front of us. If not, we use it as a funding source at town meeting. We then move to the capital budget. And that's basically to maintain the capital infrastructure of the town. And this is a significant investment in our community. You can see the request is five point eight eight million dollars. And I'm going to turn the podium over to John Souzer, our Finance Director. John not only serves as our Finance Director, but as Finance Director, he chairs the Capital Budget Committee, which is composed of two citizens, it's composed of representatives from the library, Finance Committee, the Select Board and so forth. And John will, will walk us through the numerous projects that are basically to maintain the infrastructure of our twenty-eight buildings, as well as our hundred and eighty-seven miles of roads and so, and so forth. So I'll turn it over to John.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. We have, I'm going to scroll through these introductory slides, in the interest of time. This is, you have this in your packet. This is actually the wording for the motion and it lists all of the projects. And we'll go through these in a little more detail. So I'm going to keep scrolling. That's a list of all of the funds that were recaptured from prior year projects. And then we come to the summary page. So this breaks out the fiscal year twenty-five capital plan by functional area. I will say, the Capital Planning Committee had a very challenging job this year. We reviewed forty-one projects totaling over eleven million dollars. Ultimately, the committee recommended twenty-one projects that totaled just over five point eight eight million. And you see the funding, all of the projects total five million eight hundred eighty-three thousand four oh two. There are two other funding sources, I just wanted to explain. The recaptured funds, we just talked about, those are funds that are sort of leftover, if you will, from projects from prior years that have been completed. And there are small balances left in those accounts. And then the second one that you see is the Childcare Revolving Fund for sixty-five thousand. That's a contribution from a revolving fund related to the school department. And that's to defray a portion of the cost for the Westlands Boiler Project that we'll look at in a moment. So you see the net amount borrowed is just over five point seven three million. Then we'll take a look at the projects in more detail. So the first one is under Municipal Technology, a hundred thousand to fund a core switch upgrade for our municipal network. The next project, at a cost of sixty thousand, this is actually, we have it under the Town Clerk's Office because the Town Clerk's been leading an effort to digitize and improve the storage of a lot of records in the town office building. But this is a project, sixty thousand. The original request is for more, but this is going to allow them to begin phase one, which is digitizing the building records in the building department, since we have limited physical storage space. The next one, the, involves the senior, the senior center of the building that we're standing in. This is a flooring replacement. The original request was for over two hundred thousand, however, this, the fifty thousand will allow facilities to target the repairing the flooring tile in, in the areas that need the most, most repair. So that will be, this will fund phase one and then the plan is, facilities will make an assessment and with, with senior center management and then subsequent phases will come back at a later date. The next project also involves the senior center and it's the replacement of the elevator at a cost of three hundred and twenty-five thousand. As many as you know, this, this building goes back to late nineteen eighties when it was totally remodeled. The current elevator is thirty-one years old and has reached the end of its useful life, unfortunately. Next, we move on to Public Libraries. The next project involves the HVAC system replacement at a cost of four hundred and fifty thousand. As many of you may know, the, the Adams Library underwent a total renovation and building improvement, building addition back around late nineties, early two thousand. Unfortunately, the HVAC system has passed its useful, expected useful life. There have been frequent equipment failures and repairs. And so this will allow us to fund phase one. Again, facilities will be bringing the project back and after doing a complete assessment and beginning the work. And the next year, the plan would be to fund phase two. Next project involves the Health Department. This is a staff vehicle that's replacing a high mileage vehicle, has extensive underbody corrosion at a cost of fifty thousand. And then we move to Public Safety. This first project funds the replacement of the HVAC system in the firearm, firearms range that the police department uses. We'll be replacing the air handler and exhaust recovery unit. The next project at a cost of sixty thousand involves the replacement of all of the light poles and light fixtures in the police station parking lot. Those have reached the end of the useful life and have extensive corrosion, so those must be replaced. And then the Fire Department, this project, the cost of just over one million twenty-seven thousand. This, you can see from the slide, this funds the replacement of a two thousand nine fire engine. And one of the things we, in, in talking with our fire chief and his staff, is that the Capital Planning Committee has learned over the years that it takes an extended period now for fire apparatus to be, to be constructed. So it's important that we get this replacement project into the pipeline, since it's a significant lead time. And a lot of the equipment is actually built to order. So it's not uncommon to see a lead time of two to three years from the time that the town is able to sign the paperwork and order the engine until it's actually produced and delivered. Then we move on to Public Works. This first slide includes three hundred and fifty thousand of funding for sidewalk improvements, as well as four hundred and twenty-five thousand for sidewalk improvements. Though the areas that will actually be, have the improvements done will be based on the sidewalk and pavement management assessment reports that Public Works had produced. And then the next project involves a DPW maintenance garage. This is actually an older building that's over at fifty-four Richardson Road. It's used to house the large vehicle for telemedia and also for some other highway division uses. That's, that's a cost of a hundred and fifty thousand. Next project is also, this involves the Highway Department. This is the replacement of a medium duty truck that you can see is a high mileage vehicle. It's used primarily for pothole patching, repairs and road maintenance. Next, we move on to the Cemetery Department. This project at a cost of just over eighty-two thousand funds the replacement of an older one-ton dump truck, also that will come with snow plowing equipment. The next project involves the replacement of a older plumbing van from our Municipal Facilities Department. The reason for the cost is what DPW is actually going to be replacing the van with a three-quarter ton pickup, as you see on the slide, that's equipped for snow plowing. This will assist them as we have fewer and fewer contractors interested in snow plowing in recent years. The next project involves school facilities. This is a partial roof replacement at a cost of a hundred and five thousand. If you've ever been to the School Administration Building, you know that there's the older structure out front that was remodeled. And then right immediately behind it is a modular unit. And the modular unit, this is the roof that's going to be replaced under this project. The next project involves a boiler replacement at Westlands Community Ed Center at a cost of three hundred and twenty-five thousand. As you can see from the slides, the boilers are about twenty-one years old and have exceeded their useful life. This is the project that I mentioned earlier, will be partially funded through a contribution from the Childcare Fund. The next project involves a South Row School. This is a replacement of all of the aged ceiling tiles throughout the building, with the exception of the restrooms. They have reached their, they're beyond their useful life and this is to avoid a potential safety problem with tiles becoming, falling or becoming detached as the fixtures wear out, et cetera. The next project involves McCarthy Middle School. This is the replacement of an elevator that is thirty-four years old. The, the cost for this project is three hundred and twenty-five thousand. And you could see, one of the things, as Dr. Lang mentioned earlier in his presentation, is as our buildings have aged, facilities does try to keep up with them, but you see the, sort of a recurring theme that a lot of these elevators have aged now and are beyond their useful life. The next project also involves McCarthy Middle School. This is a renovation of the front entryway at a cost of four hundred and fifty thousand. It is being proposed primarily to try to enhance security. As I'll describe Monday night, you can see that currently, if you've ever been to McCarthy Middle School, the building was built in a different era and it's completely open. And this will allow, give administration better control of, you know, folks entering and exiting the building and also allow for better security screening. This next project also involves McCarthy Middle School. The roof is going to need replacement in the future. This, the 250,000 is proposed to refund, to provide design work so that we can come back on a future capital plan and replace the roof. So the thought is have the design work done, get all of that in place, and that will make the rest of the project go smoother. And that is, that concludes the capital plan. If there's any questions on any of those projects, I'd be glad to answer those.
David Rand, 167 Dunstable Road. I'm curious. I see how the Powerball is, you know, is run mega, you know? And originally lottery money was supposed to go to the schools and stuff. Do we get any money back from them, like the Powerball?
You know, what the state did several years ago is they renamed, one of the state aid categories used to say lottery aid and general municipal assistance. It's all been combined into a new category. It's abbreviated UGGA. If you look in the, in the budget book, the blue, with the blue cover, under revenues, under state aid, and you'll see UGGA. We do receive, it basically means unrestricted general government aid. So we do, a portion comes back. The state just doesn't carve it out and call it lottery aid.
So it should be pretty good this year with that.
Yeah, unfortunately, if you do read, if you read the narrative in the, in the revenue part of the book, you'll see that certainly Chelmsford has received a good amount of state over the year, not as much as many of us would like to see in comparison to other communities. But one of the interesting highlights in the book is that if you go back several years and you combine, I believe it's, you go back to around 2008 or so, the combination of those two categories, the lottery aid and what they used to call additional assistance, we're just still under that. So if you think of all the years of inflation that have occurred between, you know, it's been decades, and we're still not up to that. So I guess what I'm saying as finance director, we're appreciative of the state aid that we get. However, it's been kind of lagging in that category, so.
And the other thing is, I live in Dunstable Road, and it's being destroyed by a company in Westford that makes tar and crush rock and stuff. And I was wondering, do we get any money from them? There's like 50 trucks a day, you know, going by.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not aware of any contributions to the town of Chelmsford.
So I was reading that, like, in San Diego, they're assessing all the trucks that go through their, you know, city limits and getting funds from the trucks. So I was wondering.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're limited under, we have motor vehicle excise.
Yeah, we don't have that authority in Massachusetts too, at the local level, to do that kind of an assessment. The select board is trying to address the issue of the truck issue off of Ledge Road, and we are, the DPW will be resurfacing Dunstable Road this construction season. But no, we don't have any means to tax or toll or otherwise charge the company out of Westford for their use of the Chelmsford roadways. Thank you. Okay, so again, we've covered Article 8, which was a school issue. So once Article 8 is completed, we then move on to what are called enterprise fund budgets for the town. And these are, these are basically standalone entities that are counted separately for particular purposes. The first one being sewer. When the town began sewer-ing, it created its own sewer fund, which basically meant that the monies that were collected for sewer and assessed for sewer only go for sewer. This year, the budget total is 5.34 million dollars, and the increase is 9% of 444,000. And the reason for that, as you can see, most of that, half that increase is from the Greater Lowell Wastewater Treatment Facility, which is where our waste is treated. So we're, we are a collector of sewer and a distributor, but the actual treatment of our sewer, as well as that of portions of Drakeit, Tingsborough, Tewksbury, and Lowell, gets treated at the wastewater treatment plant at the Merrimack River. So our assessment is going up by 10%, and will continue to do so in the future because we obviously have to pay when they're improving their sewer mains in Lowell. And if you've watched some of the environmental issues, they're under a consent order to do work there. And then obviously, the other thing is, is under our contract and services, we have to do force main assessment and pump station repairs in order to conform to our responsibilities to the State Department of Environmental Protection with the operation of our sewer system, and then we do have an increase in our debt service. Related to that for the sewer, we are also proposing to reconstruct the Kensington Road Sewer Pump Station at a cost appropriation of 655,000 dollars. Again, you keep hearing the same theme. That sewer pump station is 35 years old, and basically we need to update it so that it continues to function. And that obviously goes to the pumps in the system, the controls, the generator and so forth. And also, it's basically modernizing it, as we've done with our other recent station upgrades, to, from an in-ground system to an above-ground building, which allows for easier access and maintenance and so forth. So that's, that's the request there, that, for the appropriation of that. And again, that's borrowed and paid for of the sewer debt service over time. And that work would, you know, would begin doing bids this summer and fall. Next one is a flush truck for the sewer division. Again, in the sewer division, we're seeking 350,000 dollars to replace the flush truck. The current flush truck, again, is approaching 20 years of age. It was purchased in 2006. We're not going to trade it in. We're actually going to repurpose it over to the stormwater division. So it'll be sanitized and then used for the stormwater division because you can't use the two together, obviously, for obvious health and sanitary reasons. But once a new vehicle arrives, it'll be sanitized. And the flush truck obviously maintains our 190 miles of sewer lines through the community. We then go to the stormwater enterprise fund. Again, this is a more recent enterprise fund, and again, in conformance with state and federal environmental regulations for our stormwater system in the community. The budget here is 1.59 million dollars. It's only a minor increase of 30,000 dollars or just almost 2% in the operating budgets of that operation, which, you know, maintain our 95 miles of drains throughout the community and 4,500 catch basins, drainage outlets. And obviously, we've seen over the last almost three-quarters of a year the challenges with drainage in the community. And so it's vital to keep those systems running. We are purchasing a camera truck for the maintenance of our stormwater division at 340,000 dollars. And basically, that's a, you know, a closed-circuit television truck to basically get into the underground storm drain stations and so forth to make sure that those systems are inspected and lining and functioning in, throughout the community. Article 14 is the annual appropriation for the Chelmsford Forum ice rink. That's also an enterprise fund. We hire a third-party company to manage the forum under a procurement process. So that, that budget basically allows us to maintain the operations of the facility at 65,000 dollars. So again, it doesn't cost the taxpayers anything because the revenue comes from the lease payment from the management company. We also operate the Peg Access, who's filming tonight. We'll be filming Monday night for the local access cable television. Their staff, their operations, you can see it's 580,000 dollars. Again, not funded from the tax levy. That comes from the, you know, your licensing revenues. You know, despite the fact that people are cutting the cord and choosing alternative providers, you know, we do have revenue from the 5% surcharge on cable bills. The budget's only going up a half a percent or 3,000 dollars. You know, and that really just pretending to staff exchange and so forth in the, again, their level staff, level operations. They do have a request for equipment. You can see it's listed there. It totals roughly about 60,000 dollars, spread over the two fiscal years for, you know, computer servers, telecommunications equipment, cameras, microphones, and so forth. Again, that's funded from their retained earnings in that, in that cable access corporation operation. So next final one is the golf course. The town's now held the golf course now for three decades. We continue to manage it with a third-party procured, private party. Again, they pay the town to operate it, obviously, as a profit entity, managed facility. And the 30,000 dollars is utilized by the town to maintain the, you know, the core drain, you know, irrigation system and other components that the town's responsible for, including the clubhouse building. So again, you know, status quo level funded there. We also required under Article 18, another consent agenda article. State law currently requires us to revoke these revolving funds every year. Again, the revolving fund in this case means the monies are raised for the purpose and spent and limited to that purpose and accounted for separately. But we have to reauthorize them every year. All of these are the same as the current year, except for the senior senate, senate respite care program. That's increased, and that's just because the enrollment has increased in the program. So that's what takes place under this article. Article 19 is for the cemetery improvements. The cemetery is seeking 60,000 dollars from the revenue that the cemetery received, has received from the sale of lots and graves to maintain the improvements and development of the cemetery system. Here, it's a rather, you know, focus is on three different cemetery, well, two cemeteries and some tree work of all the cemeteries. It's paving and hydroseeding the expansion area at the main Pine Ridge Cemetery off of Berwick and Rubenek Road. And then over the West Chelmsford Cemetery, they've got to do some repairs of the drainage structures and some repaving, and then they have some tree work throughout the cemeteries. You can imagine, like everyone else, they've been challenged over the years with the weather conditions. Another consent item is the annual appropriation of 10,000 dollars for the community action program. That's been in effect, again, for almost three decades. We provide 10,000 dollars for community improvement projects, usually done through scouts and other organizations. You know, you can see the awards are, have done over 100 projects over the, over the almost three decades. And again, we put 10,000 in every year, and if it's not fully expended, it goes back to the fund, and then we put 10,000 in the next year. So it's not a, it's not a rolling fund. It's an individual annual fund for community action. The next item is our property valuation services. This is sort of a every-five-year request. The state requires the town to conduct a full property, real estate property valuation, revaluation every five years. This, our year is up in fiscal '26, which basically means we're going into '25, which means we have to do the work in '25 to submit the work that's been completed for the valuations for fiscal year '26. We're required by state law and regulations to inspect all properties in the community over a 10-year period. There are over two, we'll do over 2,000 parcels, and roughly costs you about 32 dollars a parcel for a contracted vendor to go out and do the inspections because we don't maintain that kind of staff for work effort that goes on. So that's what's taking place under this article. Article 22 moves us into the community preservation fund. As is the case every spring town meeting, we have to fund the debt service for projects that were previously approved and borrowed. We also provide 50,000 dollars for administrative expenses and the required 10% reserves in the fund. So that's what takes place here. We estimate that we'll receive 1.78 million in community preservation for the upcoming fiscal year. You can see the bulk of that is from the community preservation 1.5% surcharge in the community on property. The state revenue is a quarter of a million dollars. That is, that has been limited for, because of the fact that the state's portion comes from the deeds excise tax. And then the state only gets a deeds excise tax at the county registry of deeds when there's property refinancing or property transactions. And I think we all know that those, those activities are down. So that's a conservative estimate of what we expect to receive. Sometimes when the legislature has a surplus, they'll throw some money into the fund. But at this point, we will provide it at 255,000. The state, the state probably won't announce its funding levels until November. And by that time, the state's already, our tax rate and everything's already approved. And the state department of revenue won't allow us to do anything but be conservative. They don't want shortfalls in the preservation fund. There's a required appropriation to the reserves, but generally, we appropriate from there because there's our debt service for community preservation. So basically, we will appropriate out from those reserves to pay the debt service. You can see we're in the last year, this coming year, be the last year for the work that was done at Barney Playground that 10 years ago, Roberts Field, and you can see them listed down. The main one, the most significant one, is obviously the Coolest Farm project that was approved last Fall Town Meeting. We haven't actually bonded that. We're going to bond that this June. So that's our projection for debt service of 435. And you can see that's borrowed for a 15-year period till 2039. So that's, that's the action under that article. And then there's two minor projects, as we're nearing the end here this evening. One is the Cemetery Commission is requesting 8,000 dollars to do another round of preservation of the headstones at Forefather Cemetery in the center. You may recall this from a year ago at town meeting. It's worked well. It's been successful. They can only do so many, you know, practically in the course of a year. So this is another year of funding for the restoration of the stones at Forefather Cemetery. And then their second request, and the final request on the community preservation, and the last article that will, next to the last article we'll consider this evening at town meeting, is 40,000 dollars to install a post-in-rail fence at the west, at the, I'm sorry, at the cemetery, at West Chelmsford. That's going to replace a chain-link fence. If you go down Strawberry Hill Road, you can see it's an aged chain-link fence, and what they want to do is upgrade it to a post-in-rail fence that you see at some of the other older cemeteries in the community, such as over by Hart Pond and so forth. And then the last article is an acceptance of state statute. And this is to extend a benefit for those town employees who get called off on military service. Several months ago, we had two police officers get called into active military service. And at the time, despite the fact that we had language that would hold them harmless in terms of, you know, their seniority and leave and salary, we didn't have it in the police contract. So the select board basically did a quick agreement and approved that for benefit to the, to the Patrol Officers Union contract. We also, as I mentioned, have it already in the fire contract, and we have it in. But what we don't have it in is for other town employees. And so conceivably, there could be Public Works employees or general government employees, you know, who could get called into service. It doesn't happen that often. But the idea is if we accept this provision of state statute, it basically results in that any town employee who would be called for that length of service would not lose any pay, seniority accrued, vacation time, or other. No, you're basically holding them harmless and their family harmless. So whatever, what ends up happening is whatever compensation that they would normally regosieve for regular earnings and so forth, they'll, they'll receive net, whatever net is from what they'll be earning from the military. So that, that's the benefit that would be provided here under state law. So that's the entirety of the warrant. If you have any questions, I'll stay here. It's 10 after 9. I know you've been here for a couple hours. Thank you. We'll see you on Monday evening. If you have any other questions, don't hesitate to reach out by email or whatever to John or me or other town accountant or others between now and town meeting. If not, we'll see you on Monday evening at 7:30. And again, our hope is to be efficient and hopefully complete our work in two sessions next week, Monday and Thursday. Thank you.